Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 19th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call the meeting into order. This evening for the invocation and pledge, Ms. Kitty Etheridge is going to lead us.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the hand clapping that you have so much individuals in our family. We ask that you will continue to watch over us as individuals and as a county. Make sure that we do what is right in that side. In these things, we ask that amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Kitty. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Chairman, if I may, I'd like to amend, oops, sorry about that. I'd like to amend to the agenda to add to the consent agenda, item four, to contract for and purchase of the self-contained breathing apparatuses.
Thank you.
And also, anything else in there? That's just, yeah.
No, I'll mention that elsewhere. Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I would just remind the public, when I call you up here, please limit your comments to matters other than those appearing on this agenda as a public hearing. So if you have something that you've signed up for, for public comment, that is in a public hearing later, you may want to switch where you talk about those things. And your comments will be limited to three minutes. When you come up, please state your name and address so that we have that for the record. The first person this evening is Stephen Kinsler. Is that correct?
Of course not, sir. I have some handouts. Can I pass these out to the board, please?
Hand them, Mr.
Oh, do you need? There you go.
Excuse me, my name is Stephen Kinsler. I reside at 340 Greenview Road, Moyac, 27958. I want to thank Mr. Spike Leather for his presentation about the adequate public facilities. And the handout that I'm passing around right now is some data that I downloaded from the Currituck website. Some of you may have seen this, but I aggregated it myself using the dwelling data that's downloadable and partials it data to look up some other facts that may be missing out of that. So the primary dwelling data is what we're looking at. And I only went back about 10 years. I didn't include 2019 because the, having developed data for 2019, it was pulled from the database around March 22nd of this year. So I went ahead and started 2018, 2008. I can go back as far as 1700, but I decided for this presentation, we'll keep the last 10 years. Okay. Sorry about that. I guess all of you heard what I said up there. So we're going back 10 years worth of data here. I only want to draw your attention to 2018. As Mr. Spike Leather pointed out, the number of homes built in Currituck County was 418. Okay? That's the entire county. When you look over into the right-hand column, the results by township name in the last 10 years, 769 of those homes, I'm sorry, there were, in Moyac alone, there were 769 homes built in the last 10 years. Okay? So 2018 alone, 418 built in Currituck. When we break down these results on page three, we see that in Moyac mainland in 2018, there was 198 homes built. Okay? That's in a 10-year period, 25% of the homes in Moyac over a 10-year period. Okay? When you look at the entire data set from the very first house built ever in Moyac to 2018, last year alone accounted for 7% of all the homes in Moyac. One year. And then, when you look at, on the last page, in 2018, Moyac mainland, again, 198 homes built, that accounted for 47.37% of all the homes built last year in Moyac. Sorry, 47% of all the homes built in Currituck. I know I'm going back and forth here. Basically, half the homes built in Currituck were built in Moyac last year alone. All right? This is projected growth. It's going to keep going. And while we need a new school, we do need to keep developing, but we got to slow it down. Okay? And the numbers show that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up this evening, we have Lindsey Asbury.
Hello, and good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lindsey Asbury. I reside at 203 Genie Court here in Moyac, North Carolina. I've been a homeowner within this county since November of 2016 and resided here since January of 2017. In that time, I've become involved with my community's homeowners association, of which I currently act as president and hold a seat on the Board of Directors. While making effort to amend our poorly-written governing documents to preserve and enhance the community, I discovered that our road system was never brought to a standard adequate enough for the NC DOT to adopt them into the state road system. In 2003, the plat for Phase 1 was recorded with the county and Phases 2 and 3 in 2007. Both plats include a signed and notarized certificate of ownership and rededication that states the roads and streets are dedicated to public access and use within the county and that the developer will privately maintain such areas until the offer of dedication is accepted by the appropriate public authority, in this case, the NC DOT. In 2005, a road maintenance declaration and a street maintenance agreement were signed by the developer and filed with Currituck County, further solidifying such responsibility. In 2007, a letter of maintenance credit was established in the amount of $58,524.75 with the intended purpose to correct the issues present in Phases 2 and 3 of the subdivision so that it could be adopted into the NC DOT road system. In 2012, another letter of maintenance credit was granted in the amount of $19,230 with the intended purpose for maintenance of all roads included within the subdivision. That would be Travis Boulevard, Trevor Way, Genie Court, and Donna Court. However, as many of you know and we've discussed, a statute was passed making letters of maintenance credit no longer applicable. And in January of 2016, those funds were released. That was eight years to have utilized $58,524.75 and three to have utilized $19,230. The grantor of the letter of maintenance credit was the East Carolina Bank at the request of Currituck Homes and the listed beneficiary was the Currituck County Inspections and Planning Department. In all my research, I have yet to uncover whose responsibility it was to facilitate the use of these funds for their intended purpose, but they were not utilized. And today, our roads, dedicated to public use for the county of Currituck, are still failing to meet the standard for adoption to the state system. The defects in our road system are primarily due to negative drainage caused by our poorly engineered and maintained ditching system, to which the developer still holds the North Carolina stormwater permit. In addition, according to the most recent notice I have in my possession dated April of 2018, the developer nor his responsible parties have yet to establish encroachment agreements with our major utilities, provide a right-of-way agreement, or provide copies of applicable permits to the NC DOT as part of the petition as well. Despite $77,754.75 being granted to the county and subsequently released due to lack of utilization for necessary improvements, the signed and notarized certificate of ownership and rededication by the developer and two signed agreements filed with the county by the developer, I have been told that our community's only option for resolution is private litigation with the developer to either hold him accountable or take ownership over that and accept the burden. This is not an acceptable answer, made even more unacceptable by the fact that when the UDO was updated to include more comprehensive outline and the established, outline for the establishment of an association and the transfer of maintenance responsibilities from a developer to a homeowners association, these responsibilities did not retroactively apply to developers of planned communities like mine who were incorporated prior to that amendment. So nearly 80K lost and no clear standard of responsibility to hold to the developer to, especially to the extent we would need in our situation. I'm going to get to the point because I know my time is up and I appreciate you indulging me.
Thank you.
I pay nearly $1,500 in taxes for my property. We're probably going to need close to $150, if not more, to fix the problem. That's $2,000.
$150,000?
Yeah, $150,000.
Yeah.
Okay? That's a $2,000 special assessment against my home. It seems to me my $1,500 would be better spent in a special assessment than to property taxes. But I, as a taxpayer and homeowner of this county, have a responsibility as a taxpayer and a homeowner. And if I don't hold up my responsibility, I have consequences. I'm asking that the commissioners please help me with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your concerns and wishing those. And she did bring up an interesting point. Perhaps one of you has given...
I have one question. Your roads, you're in launch land in the, not the old part, but the new part, correct?
Correct. That would be Travis Boulevard and the...
Are y'all, are y'all state main thing now?
No, still.
That's, that's, that's her point.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I know it was, a couple times it was closed.
And Mr. Bissell is holding a meeting at the public library tomorrow at 7:00 PM to ensure that his new community will have proper drainage. I find that very ironic.
She mentioned the county. How did you put that exactly?
The letters of maintenance credit, and you all can have these copies because I already have some.
If you can just give those to Ms. Leanne over here.
Thank you. You can see that the East Carolina Bank granted them on behalf of Currituck Homes as the developer with the beneficiary being planning and inspections of Currituck County.
Well, we're not going to get into it in a public comment here necessarily, but we can, we can, we can have the staff look into it and provide you with some answers, if anything. And one of these two gentlemen or myself will contact you most likely, just to, just to let you know exactly where we stand as a county.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Jeff Brundage.
I was just there in case you didn't hear.
Okay. She did good. She did good. Susan Powers?
Hello again. My name is Susan Powers. I live at 251 Greenview in Moyac. I wanted to talk again because we weren't able to discuss the growth during the growth session. I know we focused a lot on schools. Luckily, my kids are at elementary school. After another year, they'll be at the, my son will be at the high school. I'm going to be completely selfish. I'm also worried about our fire department and our EMS services. I'm going to be, like I said, completely selfish. I want to make sure they have adequate facilities to respond to any problems I have at my house, my neighbor's house. So I don't know that was addressed, if it's being addressed. That's just my concern also with the growth in Moyac. And I know that you've got things that are already approved, that you can't really go back and, you know, put the reins on it, but as you're aware, we're having a meeting tomorrow about flora farms on survey road. So that's a concern that you're going to be approving other developments. So thank you again for your time.
Every meeting, you're welcome.
Okay.
Come on up. Thank you.
And I like that you don't hold it against me that I'm a Democrat.
Right. I don't have anyone else signed up for a public comment this evening. Would anyone else like to speak while you're in the room? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. And move on to next agenda item, which is Commissioner's report. I usually lead that off and so, this evening, we have something a little bit different. We have Ms. Tina Scanlon retiring, and so I'm going to read in a resolution from the Board of Commissioners congratulating Tina Scanlon on her retirement from Currituck County. Whereas Tina Scanlon retired on August 1st, 2019, after 32 years of dedicated service as an employee of Currituck County, and whereas Tina Scanlon's career with Currituck spanned from July 6, 1987, until July 3, 1st, 2019, beginning as a Building Inspection Secretary, moving to the Finance Department, performing data processing and accounting clerk duties, then appointment as a Computer Systems Admin to become the county's first and only Director to date of Internet Technology Services. And whereas during her tenure, Tina Scanlon distinguished herself with her deep knowledge and ability related to computer technology, networking, and network security, and the expertise and leadership developed during her career has been invaluable to Currituck County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its gratitude to Tina Scanlon for her service to Currituck County and for all that she has contributed to Currituck County, and be it further resolved that Currituck County Board of Commissioners wishes her success in all her endeavors and expresses hope for her continued health, happiness, and prosperity in her well-known retirement, adopted this 19th day of August, 2019. So congratulations, Tina, and thank you for the many years of service to Currituck County. For those of you, most of you have been in the room, for those of you who weren't in the room or weren't watching earlier, we had a little work session and discussion on adequate public facilities, getting a little tongue-tied after reading that, and, and schools and, and how they impact us. Just brought up about fire and EMS. I'm sure that Commissioner Beaumont can talk to those concerns in a minute, as he is our Commissioner, pointing to the FIAB Board, which, which deals with our fire and EMS services. And to the public at large, I just want to say that over the last several years that I've been a Commissioner, serving on this board, we have, we have given 800,000 more towards capital expenditures in the last two years' budgets towards the school system. $400,000 each year. Those monies go towards capital expenditures. And for those of you that don't know what that means exactly, things like playgrounds, building improvements, they want a new greenhouse, that money is in there for them to utilize to build a new greenhouse. Mr. Spike Leather hit on it, that we had an emergency request for over $200,000 for a wall that was, a brick wall that was kind of coming apart at the, at the school. So we allocated those funds to them. And my point in that is just that we are, we as Board of Commissioners are there to answer the call when needed for our kids and our school system. As we move through this and we have, and we're going to build a new school, we're looking at 2023 as a projected date by the end of the summer, basically, so the kids can be in there as of now for a new elementary school in the Moyac area. We've set aside monies for that. Bobby Hannig, our state representative, got $11 million into the budget, which will go towards those schools. So kudos to Bobby for doing that and getting us that money. We also have set aside money for years, and at this time, we have a little over $4 million set aside to go towards school. We nibble at it away and put money away so that when that day comes, we have some money there. And we also put money away for land acquisition. So we are moving forward with that. And I would invite anyone who didn't watch the, the meeting, that it will be available on YouTube, probably in a couple days, to take a minute to review adequate public facilities. It helps explain what we have to do as Commissioners and why we have to do what we do. Something other than schools, my particular ballpark is tourism. And today, I received an email from our Tourism Director on tourism impacts on Currituck County. Aside from three months of being trapped on the weekends and getting out of your homes if you live on the mainland, generally tourism is a good thing. Previous boards worked hard to understand that and grow the mainland, and we have seen that come to fruition in our ballfields and the amount of weekend activity that's going on there, tournaments, all those things are going to combine to grow the mainland, which is our next area focus as a Board of Commissioners and as a county. We recognize that the Outer Banks does a lot, but we need to be able to, to hold our own over here. What happens if we have a major hurricane and we wipe out Corolla and the Currituck Outer Banks and we're years getting back? You know, the, the tax implications to us are pretty substantial. So we, as a county, also work very hard to have adequate reserves and plan for that eventuality if it ever does happen. But in the past year, our years work a little differently. So we, in 2018, we had $243 million roughly in direct tourist spending for job creations of 2,130 jobs annually created within the tourist industry itself. Speaking of tourist industries, here comes Mr. Harris. Because of that, each resident pays about $900 less in local and state taxes. So that tax implication to us is pretty substantial and, and what we would have to ask of you as individuals. So keep that in mind as you're having to deal with that Saturday traffic. On an average day, $123,000 goes into local paychecks, and that money is spent, obviously, here locally for the people that live and work in Currituck County, and hopefully, most of it stays in Currituck County. Over the past two and a half years, I've served as Commissioner and with, and on the Tourism Advisory Board as a Commissioner to that Board. And we've worked very hard to increase tourism, look at our advertising, where that money goes, how it's spent, what markets we go into, and, and the demographics financially, we even look at that to, to advertise to certain financial demographics to get the best bang for our buck for not only us, but the businesses that are here. We've explored new areas of growth, and, and we're seeing that come to fruition now. We've moved into other areas and we're seeing, I talked to people this summer from Georgia that came up here to go to our beaches. You wouldn't think that would be a growth market, but apparently it is. We started advertising down there, and now we're seeing that start to pay a little bit of dividends. So I just want people to be aware of how much effort goes into it and what it does for us as a county. Financially, the implications are huge beyond putting our teenagers to work during the summer. And I want to take a moment to recognize and thank not only the Tourism Advisory Board, for anybody that serves on board, as you know, it's, it pays about 50 bucks a meeting and, but it takes a lot more time than that. So I want to thank the Tourism Advisory Board for their time and, and giving back to their community in that way, and our tourism staff. They work very hard. They put on a lot of events. They're out there sweating when it's 95, 100 degrees at Whalehead or over at the CCRC or over at our ballfields. So thank you to them. And that's all I have for this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kitty Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remind everybody that, believe it or not, we have a general election coming up that's going to be held on Tuesday, September the 10th. It's for the US House of Representatives for the District 3 to replace after the death of our Representative Walter Jones. One-stop voting starts this Wednesday, and it will run through September the 6th, and the hours are Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, except they will be open one Saturday, which will be August the 31st, from 8:00 to 3:00 PM. And then on September the 5th and 6th, they'll be open from 8:00 to 6:00 o'clock, and they will be closed on Labor Day. If you need any more information about this election, you can give the Election Board Office a call at 232-2525. And please make sure you go out and vote. I think for the primary, it was probably like 7% of the population voted. It was really pitiful. So please make sure you go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beaumont.
So a couple things. One, relative to our, both fire and EMS, part of the ways that, that Currituck benefits from the all volunteer, well, the volunteer force primarily in the mainland is through mutual aid. So even as we, we grow, I, I think it is a very rare occurrence where you only see one township's fire apparatus or one township's fire forces that, that show up. In fact, a recent fire a little further to the south in the county wound up with fire departments, including Chesapeake. Kitty Hawk was there, Southern Shores was there, Corolla was there. So, and that's, that's one of the great things about the fire service and about the folks that work that. All that said, we're very in tune and we keep very much plugged into, you know, the challenges that our departments are facing. And, and I'll be honest, folks, people are not volunteering in the fire departments the way they used to. So a lot of times, it's not a question of, do we have apparatus? Do we have enough fire trucks to respond? But will in fact, anybody answer the page when it goes off? Typically, county staff and every fire department has at a minimum a, an ambulance that is staffed by two county personnel. And typically, they will roll to a fire call. One person will drive the ambulance and someone will drive a piece of fire apparatus to make sure that when volunteers show up at the scene itself, there's a piece of apparatus to actually fight the fire with. So we're keeping track of those, those types of trends and those types of events. And from a, from a EMS perspective, anytime an ambulance gets called out and has to do a transport and carry people away out of the county, the other emergency management facilities or ambulances, they will reposition as necessary in order to make sure that we, we maintain that level of adequate emergency medical care as necessary. One of the, the recent additions to the capabilities within the county is actually fire engines that are fully capable of advanced life support, which means, with the exception of transporting a patient, we have fire engines that are capable of providing every level of service to an injured individual that an ambulance could. So the only thing missing is that they can't transport. The other thing, and I'm sure Commissioner McCord will add to that, Commissioner McCord, myself, and Commissioner Payment, last, well, I guess it was almost about a week and a half ago, we had the opportunity to travel to the White House and speak to the President's Intergovernment Affairs Office. It was a, a, basically an afternoon of briefings as far as where the President's headed with some of the core issues, a lot of which impacts us as Americans, but specifically, it was another opportunity to kick the government in the shins about helping us out with some of our Army Corps of Engineer challenges that we have, specifically the roads in Corova and getting Whalehead Club dredged. Hopefully, we'll have some positive news in the future, but we're, we're again trying to get some traction on that. And then finally, I want to do a shout-out to Matt Hughes with Corolla Ocean Rescue, who took first place in the two-mile run in the National Lifeguard Championship Series that was just held. He, you know, he had teams from Los Angeles, teams from Southern California, and, and our very own Matt Hughes took first place. So shout-out to those folks. I'm sorry?
We beat Baywatch. Nice.
Why, yes, they did. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. A little bit remiss, I'll take a moment. Commissioner Payment was here a little while ago. He was feeling under the weather, so he took off tonight. That is why he's not here, just so that everyone knows. Mr. McCord?
Just to touch on a few things that Commissioner Beaumont stated, myself, Commissioner Payment, and Commissioner Beaumont, we went to the White House. We were on the front row. We wore those guys out with some questions, made some good contacts, probably made some enemies maybe with some of our questions, but that's what we're there to do. As far as the fire and the EMS, I'm law enforcement here in Currituck County, if you don't know. I've been with the Sheriff's Department since 2000. I was the first one I seen at a fire call today, helped put out a kitchen fire. So as far as the EMS and the fire in the county, those guys are awesome. The volunteers, awesome. I'll rave on them. Your law enforcement, we have good staff. I mean, not just in their emergency service, our dispatchers, whatever. You could just go on. I wanted to touch on a couple other things too as well. The, this summer, our sheriff, not just because he's my boss, Matt Biker, had put together a program last year for some of the youth in the county that, or maybe, I don't know how to say this, maybe underprivileged and don't get to go and do a lot of things because that happens in every community. We had 85 kids attend the youth camps this summer. Some of the kids, there's a mentor camp that they have for a week where they teach the kids CPR, they teach the kids, they see everything from demos to the Sheriff's Department, different stuff with fire and EMS. Commissioner White also, he donates tours for his business, for the horse tours in the Outer Banks. There's kids that have lived in this county their entire life, they're in high school and middle school, some of them have never been to the beach before. And, you know, this guy's donating, not just to give a shout-out to his business, but other businesses too, give stuff and everything. It's a great program. The deputies, those guys put a lot, it was a really good article in the 14th of the Coastline Times saying all the stuff they do. And just, you know, your county staff giving back to your community. And that's one thing that we're, we're big on. And like I said again, I'm not going to name every business because I probably can't, but I know a lot on vacations, they donate a bunch to the water park and different stuff like that. Carolyn and Norman, Bobo. Carolyn and Norman, Bobo. One more thing, social media. You know, I mean, it's, and we tell our kids, you know, if you can't say nothing nice, don't say nothing at all. I read the stuff all the time. You know, you've got to have thick skin, but you've got to have thick skin to be in law enforcement, too. So, I read some of the comments where somebody was complaining about the ball fields that we built. That's tourism money. We had almost 50 ball tournaments there in the county, and it's a super success. I made this statement before, my buddy owns seven golf courses in Virginia, loves coming down here to play ball. Our ball fields are nice. It's a service to the county. It's another form of tourism, like Commissioner White said, if something happened to the beach. It's another way where it supports the local business, the Keratuck barbecue, you know, the different businesses here in the county from coming to there. So, just, you know, like you said, the social media, you know, we're incompetent, we read all this stuff, which you've got to have thick skin to do this. We're not doing it for the pay. So, like I said, it's, you know, but we're constantly doing stuff. Like, we went to DC, you know, made some good contacts with that. And like I said, it's easy to take shots and stabs, I guess, but, you know, I mean, like I said, hey, I've got thick skin, I can take more. All right? That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Etheridge.
Follow-up on what Kevin said about social media. If anybody has a question, all they've got to do is ask. I'll be glad to take the time to talk to you or respond to you, an email. No, the other commissioners are the same way. We have nothing to hide, and we're not trying to hide anything. I was here on the Board of Commissioners when Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance was adopted, and we were the first local government in North Carolina to adopt an adequate public facilities ordinance. We had the carries of the world, Union County, the big counties, come to us and ask us, how did you do it? Why did you do it? And what we basically told them, you have to have the will to do it and not worry about the politics, because when you start worrying about politics, you get in trouble. I've always lived under the axiom that if you do watch right, the politics will take care of themselves. So, be patient with us. The Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance has served this county very well. It triggered the growth of the Shawboro School, the building of the Shawboro School and the Jarvisburg, because we were looking at the numbers expanding. So, it has worked, it will continue to work. Just understand, folks, that government is a lot like making sausage. It ain't purdy, but it will get done.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jarvis.
I had the pleasure last week to meet with Samantha Hurd, the Director of Keratuck County's Social Services. And this meeting, we both voiced hope that our partnership will improve the dialogue with the Trillium Health Organization and bring some services to this county so our citizens do not have to travel outside of the county to get those services. She and I agreed that we would talk regularly before each advisory meeting and to help facilitate that partnership. I concluded with her giving me a tour. I was so impressed by the staff, the facilities, and the many things that that department does that most of us just take for granted. So, thanks to everything that that department does. And finally, I'd like to wish the faculty and staff of Keratuck County Schools heartfelt good luck as they start school this week and prepare for the thousands of students that will come to their rooms next week. And keep in mind that school will start for students on Monday. Please drive safely, stay off your phones, and look for those buses and children as we start a brand-new school year. Thank you. I didn't want to say it, but yes, I am.
Indulge speed in them school zones.
Right. Keratuck County's going to get you. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two events that we have coming up in our community. The first one is the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School. It's going to be celebrating a 10-year anniversary of placement on the National Register of Historic Places and 150-year anniversary of their land deed to build the school, which was purchased by William M. Hunt, an African-American farmer, in 1867. That event is going to occur on Saturday, August 24th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. At 7302 Keratoke Highway in Jarvisburg. If you want to find out more information, you can go to www.hjcs.org. We'd love to have people come and see this treasure that we have down in Lower Keratuck. It's really something that sets Keratuck County apart, the way that we've recognized our history and the fact that people want to share in that, I think, is really special. So, anybody in the community or surrounding areas, come out, check it out, it's a really neat place. The next thing that I wanted to mention is coming up here in a little while. It is in affiliation with the Moayak Animal Hospital. Keratuck County Animal Services and Control is going to offer a free rabies clinic. You have to have ID required. It's for all Keratuck County residents. It's going to be located at the Judicial Center on September 28th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and you must show proof of a rape, proof of, you must, to get the three-year booster, you have to show proof that they've had the original rabies vaccine.
Got that.
Yeah. So, and if you have any questions, you can call 435-2250. Couple other updates that I have for the Board. The first one is about a project, Phase 5 of our Greenway Project in Corolla. We are wrapping up that project. I actually signed the document to close the project, and it came in $55,388 under budget. So, we did, you know, our staff specifically, Eileen Worth did a really good job of managing that project and seeing it through all the way. Then, we'll take that money, obviously, and put it into something else in Corolla, some of the other infrastructure projects that we've got planned. Finally, the last update I have ties into the development and the increase that we've seen in Keratuck County. As you have in development increase, the demands on staff becomes greater, especially our planning staff. In order to facilitate the timely processing of applications, we do what's called a Technical Review Committee before it goes to the Planning Board, so that staff can get comments to any of the developers and let them know what our concerns are, not just from planning, but from water, sewer, from DOT. In the past, we've invited folks to come who are the applicants to sit down as we go through that process. The issue is, we've got so many projects that are coming forward, we do not have the time. It takes five or six staff members a whole day to sit and converse about this. So, we're going to shift that to where the TRC is going to be only staff in the room to go over the comments. We'll prepare a written list of comments and get those to the developer and let them respond in kind, so it'll be more efficient for the staff time and more efficient for the taxpayers, I believe, to do it that way. So, we're going to make that change. It's just the workload is just, it's more than we can handle in some ways on the planning side. So, and that's all that I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
County Manager, I have one question. The questions they answer, that's the comments from like the public hearing, emails to staff and stuff, mainly, correct?
Some of that. I mean, some of it is, it might be our engineer looks and sees that their stormwater pond, something's calculated incorrectly, they ask them to change it. It could be planning staff. At last, the last meeting, you heard some concerns they had about a plan about mailboxes, for instance, we would just let them know this is a concern we have. Sometimes, it's NC DOT talking about where driveway cuts are. It really can be a whole host of things, but some of it's a public comment, but also, some of it's just technical. It's actually specifically for the technical aspect of the development, so.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. Item A, PV 19-5 Windswept Pines, a request to conditional zone 66-point acres from conditional mixed residential to conditional mixed residential. Could explain in a minute. To 14 residential lots, streets, and modify phases in the Windswept Pines Development located on the north side of Baxter Road in Moayak, parcels 42 to 58, 1 through 12, and tax map 9 parcels 6A and 11L in the Moayak Township. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Lo Sisera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This conditional zoning application is submitted by the property owners of Windswept Pines Development to modify the approved development plan. The property is located in Moayak, on the north side of Baxter Lane, primarily east of the railroad right-of-way. There is a small portion of the development that is located between the railroad right-of-way and Keratoke Highway. It is currently zoned conditional mixed residential. They are not proposing to change this district, they're just proposing to amend the development plan associated with the conditional mixed residential. The area to the north is low-density residential, woodlands and farmlands and sand mine, all zoned GB, general business and ag. The property to the south is residential and business, also zoned GB, general business and ag. The property to the east is farmland and zoned ag. Property to the west, across Keratoke Highway, contains a cemetery and is farmland zoned GB. It is designated rural in the 2006 Land Use Plan, is the Land Use Plan classification, and is zoned rural, I mean, is classified as rural. But in the Moayak Small Area Plan, it is designated as full service in that small area plan. In 2015, the conditional MXR zoning was established for the property that created 59 residential lots, 1.4-acre commercial area, that's the area on the other side of the railroad right-of-way, and a future development area. The applicant did not include a development plan for the future development area in 2015. In 2018, the Board approved conditional MXR and amended the conditions in the project area to include additional stormwater ponds in Phase 2, but still a future development area. Now, the conceptual plan, development plan, shows the area previously identified as future development area as 14 lots with streets, open space, stormwater improvements, sidewalks, and buffers. So, they've added essentially this area right here as a, as a, they've, to put lots in, an area that was designated future development area. The 15-acre area was not included in the development area on the 2015 plan. This will increase the overall number of lots from 59 to 73. The plan also modifies the phasing of the development to now include Phase 3, which are those 14 lots. The road extensions and access for this phase provides interconnectivity to the lands north and east. If approved, the proposed 14 lots will increase the committed capacity for the school facilities. You have a new table in the Commissioner, sorry, Chairman White referenced at our last meeting with the actual capacity and committed capacity. Sorry. And those numbers do not reflect, I guess, the enrollment data and perhaps the shift in looking at an individual school instead of the three northern schools. They are still grouped that way, because that was the way this was presented to the Planning Board. So, those numbers are still based on our earlier ADM, Annual Average Daily Membership for the schools. The new table in your agenda packet identifies the actual school capacities and also the school capacities based on the 2012 classroom, 2021 classroom standards that we went over earlier in the adequate facilities presentation by the county manager. I think the additional lots will increase the committed capacities. It will not exceed the actual capacities. We're back to, this is, we're still looking at the three, the grouping of the three elementary schools. And it will have a marginal effect on the overall percentages.
Just for the folks out there, what she's talking about, and I mentioned earlier, the number of students we're talking about at elementary level is three for this project, one for the middle school, and two for high school.
So, the developer provided three sample elevations for the typical homes that are going to be built in Phase 3. So, there, here's a summary of the proposed changes to the conceptual plan. The current plan, there are 59 residential lots that are approved. The proposed plan are putting 14 more lots for a total of 73 residential lots. The current plan shows 51.32 acres of development area. This excludes the future development area that was designated on the map on the first conceptual plan. The new plan, 65.32 acres of development area, but it also includes the 1.4-acre commercial area. The current plan has 1.149 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed plan is 1.116 dwelling units per acre. The density, and there is a density increase for the total tract. The current plan, 17.05 acres of designated open space. The proposed plan, 24.57 acres of open space. So, there is an increase in the open space. The current plan, and this is what Mr. Chairman White was speaking of earlier, 15 elementary school students have generated, five middle school students and eight high school students under the current plan. The proposed plan, 18 elementary school students should be generated, six middle school students generated, and 10 high school students. So, you're adding two elementary school, one middle school, and two high school students. There will be the associated infrastructure with this plan, the stormwater, stormwater management, streets, sidewalks, utilities, and buffers, and they were also going to amend the phasing. So, this is just a summary of what's approved and what's their proposed changes. With this development, because it's conditional MXR, there are proposed zoning conditions. These are the approved zoning conditions, that the use would be a subdivision, all lots will be greater than or equal to 20,000 square feet. The developer is going to install a new culvert under Baxter's Lane to improve off-site drainage, size would be, has been determined. Explore the possibility of routing a portion of stormwater runoff to the northeast, and all residential development will be single-family and conform to the sample building elevation. So, those were the original conditions of approval. So, in the 2006 Land Use Plan, this is designated the rural Land Use Plan classification. It is in the Moayak Subarea with the policy emphasis on managing the urban level of growth with a density between one to two units per acre. The Moayak Small Area Plan designates this service, this area as a full-service land use classification with one and a half to three units per acre based on the surrounding land uses. So, the maximum density in full service under our Unified Development Ordinance MXR standards to two dwelling units per acre, single-family detached, and unlimited service is one point, I mean, is one dwelling unit per acre. So, there's, we have a little bit of inconsistency, because this area is designated rural on the land use, on the current 2006 Land Use Plan. With a recent legislative decision, more weight has been given to the KAMA-approved Land Use Plan. So, with this legislative decision, we were going to need to update the future Land Use Plan map within the 2006 Land Use, KAMA-approved Land Use Plan to designate this area as full service. So, which is basically what I just went over this slide. The, so, the conditional zoning request is consistent with and amends the 2006 Land Use Plan by designating this property as full service on the future land use map, because the amendment recognized and implements the full-service designation of the Moayak Small Area Plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners. It is reasonable in the public interest, because it is required by changed conditions acknowledged by the Moayak Small Area Plan and addresses a demonstrated need, providing both, providing a full-service area that offers mixed-use development, both residential and commercial development. So, both the TRC Technical Review Committee and Planning Board recommend approval of this rezoning to finish out this development, to add 14 more lots to the Windswept Pines Development with the associated open space, stormwater, infrastructure, and other infrastructure such as sidewalks and streets. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this moment.
What was the total, it's 14 lots, what was the total acreage? You said 15 acres? Is it the final parcel?
It's 65.32 acres of the total development area.
Are you talking about the new section?
Yeah, the new section is, so, the new section is roughly 14 acres?
Roughly.
Okay. I, thank you.
So, there's 30 lots recorded now. What stage is the current neighborhood in as far as build-out? Do you know?
It may take me a moment to find it. It may take me a minute to find it because, but we do have it for the earlier presentation.
Yeah. Well, I can just ask the applicant, I guess, that'd be maybe quicker.
Forty, actually, sorry, 40 remaining lots. They've had a total of 18 built so far.
And we did not do any phasing, timed phasing with this subdivision of memory service? They just, they're building at whatever phase they can build up?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any more questions for Mrs. Cicero at this time? Okay. I will invite the applicant up.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bissell.
I think that Phase One is actually built out.
Okay.
They may not have applied for COs and everything, but everything is, has been built. Phase Two of the subdivision is nearing completion of the infrastructure. Phase Three will just be a continuation of the existing development pattern. As Ms. LaCicero said, it's about 14 lots on a little over 14 acres, so about one unit per acre, minimum 20,000 square foot lot size with good open space and expansion of the stormwater facilities. As Ms. LaCicero said, it's consistent with the Moyauk subarea part of the land use plan, which calls for one to two units per acre with onsite wastewater. So we're at one, consistent with the Moyauk small area plan, well below that density. I'd like to point out one change that we had agreed to at the planning board meeting, but it wasn't incorporated into the approval, and that was that some of the residents had expressed concern about having two commercial buildings. This plan that's on the screen actually has only one. The plan that was reviewed at the planning board meeting had two 2,500 square foot buildings on the one and a half acre commercial parcel on the highway. And as a result of those concerns, we agreed to eliminate that second building and go back to the one building plan that you see on the, on the screen. The planning board did unanimously recommend it for approval. Again, this is a rezoning at this stage, not a use permit. We do provide interconnectivity that currently doesn't exist on the track in two locations, and we think it's a good way to finish out this, this track. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
One of the things that we hit on was the previous approval, putting the drainage culvert in at Baxter Lane. Wouldn't anticipate that taking place.
That has been done.
It has been done. Okay. And I think it seems like the other question was drainage to the north.
And we actually did send some drainage to the northeast in connection with the Phase Two amendment.
Okay.
One of the other concerns was the speed limit signs. Has that been taken care of, have signs for speed limits gone up in the neighborhood?
I know there were temporary signs that were put up.
25 miles per hour, I believe. Which is not a state-maintained road as of yet, which...
Right. I think...
There was a concern by, at the meeting, that there were no signs posted.
Right.
I think the developer put those up the next week.
There was a watch for children, not speed.
Oh, the speed limit?
There was one a couple of weeks after the meeting.
So there's no posted speed limits?
We have a state question.
Well, there, there was a concern at the, the meeting that there were no signs, and they were told that they would put up some temporary signs. It said DOT will put up permanent speed limit signs when they take the roads into the state system, but the developer will put up some temporary signs. So I'm just asking if that's been done.
The only signs we had spoke about putting up, that I, that I recall was the watch for children plan, and we did put those up several weeks after the meeting.
Okay. Would you be adverse to putting some speed limit signs in the neighborhood?
They're non-enforceable if it's not a favor, unless they were driven reckless or intoxicated.
Well, more of a suggestion of speed, just like 45 through Moyauk is really just kind of a suggestion of the speed.
We'll be, we'll be petitioning the state to take over the first phase of roads very soon.
Any more questions for the applicant from the board? All right. Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing, public comment phase of this, and I do not have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this item on the agenda tonight? All right. So no, no, we'll close the public comment and open forth for further discussion from the board. You got something on your mind?
Yeah. I had my feelings well. Given our discussion of school capacities, and granted, it's 14 lots, but in the face of the fact that us being at the meeting Monday night where, as far as I can tell, we're over-capacity of Moyauk Elementary, and I'm not aware of any plan, and I, and I understand, we can flex, I'm sorry, I understand that there are tools available to the Board of Education to flex capacity with schools, the moving of boundaries or the addition of, of portable classrooms. I personally am at a personal struggle at, you know, I've already got a school that's over-capacity, or depending on which number you're looking at, and approving, you know, another several kids to go in that same over-capacity school. So I know this is down as a rezoning, but it's already zoned, so I'm curious, is it a, yes? Is it rezoning for an additional 14 lots?
Yes. The conditional rezoning, it will amend the development plan to allow these, these additional 14 lots.
But it's technically still a rezoning from what exists now?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. It's a rezoning, so it's a legislative decision, which means that there is more subjectivity allowed in the decision-making process as opposed to a use permit process.
I'm, I'm concerned we've exceeded public capacity, and, you know, I've not seen anything from the school board yet, and I'm sure it'll be coming. I've not seen anything to alleviate that concern.
Can I, could we make the, well, not maybe, but could we motion to table it to the next meeting since Commissioner Payment had to leave, which is, you know, a couple of weeks from now, so we have a school board number, per se?
Do that?
Okay.
Do you think they're going to have a number?
Two weeks? Well, I mean, they, I would hope so because they're going to have a head count and they, how many get dropped off and how many get picked up? I hope it's the same number.
Well, I think we, we had to concern ourselves more with not only schools, but fire protection. I think we all got an email about some of the drainage problems that are going on in some of the developments, so I think we need to take all that in consideration also.
All right. I'll make the motion to just table it to the first, first meeting in September, which is, I believe, the third? Second's the holiday?
It is the third.
Because the second's the holiday.
Because the second is likely, so you next meeting will be on the third.
So we can, first day of schools is the 26th of August. We can get a statistic on that.
Okay.
My, I mean, it's 14 lots. My concern is going to be student population goes up and down for probably the first two weeks of school. That's just historically. There's still people coming and going. So is two weeks enough?
No, it's not.
I don't think so.
Can we go to September?
So, I mean, if we're going to table it, let's give them a month.
Your true count, your true count's not going to come until after Labor Day when people realize, oh, yeah.
Hey, school started.
Yeah. Still, school started and we live in North Carolina.
I want to amend my motion to table it, and since Commissioner Payment's not here as well, because of the sickness, to the 16th, is that our meeting?
Yes, sir.
The 16th of September, for us to discuss the population number as well as the other.
Okay. I think we got that.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. It's continued. Next agenda on the item this evening, PB 11-02 Kitty Hawk Flight School LLC, request for an outdoor tour operator aviation. Use permit for property located at 6997 Carrottoke Highway, tax map 108, parcel 39, Poplar Branch Township. And we'll invite the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak to this matter to come forward, to be sworn in. Left hand on the bough, or right in the air? Thank you all. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to be give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you say hope you got?
I do, sir.
And now we're back to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if you guys would like to sit down for a minute, I'll call you up in just a minute when she gets done with her presentation, so you don't have to hang out too long.
Before you tonight is amending a use permit that was originally issued in 2011. It is for property located near the Cotton Gin, adjacent to the Cotton Gin in Jarvisburg. Here's the, the aerial of it. It is the front of the properties are zoned ag, or the property's zoned ag, I mean, sorry, general business, with the rear of the property's own ag or agriculture. It is in the 2006 land use plan. It is designated as limited service in the front and conservation area in the rear, next to the sound. So in 2011, the board approved a use permit for an outdoor recreation facility for the use of light sport aircraft and tandem hang gliding. The use permit was issued with a condition that it be reviewed by the board in one year. Then on April 16th, the use permit was renewed for three years, and on May 4th, 2015, after a three-year review, the board issued the use permit without an expiration. Mr. John Harris of Kitty Hawk Flight School LLC has submitted an amendment to the application to change the use to aviation outdoor tour operator and to include paragliding, powered paragliding, solo hang gliding and trikes. There are no other proposed changes to the operations or to the site. Adequate parking and public facilities are, for this use are available. I mean, public restroom, sorry, public facilities. It's the word of the, of the evening. Parking, the parking and, and public restrooms for this use are available at the, at the Cotton Gin. So here's a sample of their takeoff pattern. All flights will originate from the runway into the wind, and the tow flight will be within the blue area until at least 5,000 feet, sorry, 500 feet. More samples of their takeoff patterns. This is their, the runways that are highlighted in red. So the Technical Review Committee recommends adoption of this use permit, because the application complies with all applicable review standards of the UDO and the conditions of approval necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards of UDO and to prevent or minimize adverse effects to the development application. On the surrounding land, to include, and most of these were part of the original use permit that was, that was approved. The landing area shall be limited to private use. Instrument flight rule, IFR procedures are not permitted. Flight operations are limited to light sport aircraft, including trikes, tandem hang gliding, tandem hang gliders, paragliding, powered paragliding and solo hang gliders. Flight operations are only permitted from April 1st to October 1st. Aviation tour operators, operations shall comply with the standards and regulations of the, of the Federal Aviation Administration, and flight patterns shall be established to limit flights below 500 altitude over single-family residential zoning districts or existing single-family residential uses. So in our use permit, there are four standards that we need to make appropriate findings a fact, and typically, staff makes a recommendation for at least two of those. And I will go over that, that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. And the land use plan, staff's recommendation is that the 2006 land use plan classifies the site as limited service within the Jarvisburg subarea. With respect to non-residential uses, it is essential that existing community character be preserved. Business design to serve tourist industry should not be prohibited, providing the character and intensity of the uses in keeping with the character of surrounding areas. The proposed use is in keeping with the following policies of the plan, policy CD9, policy ED1 and policy ED4. The other permit standard, use permit standard that staff typically responds to is that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to, schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement and other county facilities. Applicable state standards and guidelines shall be followed for determining when public facilities are adequate. And preliminary staff findings that this should not have an impact on public facilities as an existing use. They're just, at this point, they're just expanding the types of flying that they're doing, keeping with the same hours and the same mode of operation. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have of me at this point.
Questions ready for the applicant to come up?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. LaCicero. This time I'll invite the applicant up to talk us about their project. And if you both would, please state your name and address, so we have it for the record.
John Harris, 53, Deer Pass, Southern Shores.
Luke Bear, 700 Skipjack Lane, Cota Hills.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Staff. Let's see, I think we're, we have two issues to respond to, if I understand correctly. Okay. Thank you. The, the use, the first one is the use will not endanger the public health or safety. And our, the response to that is our operations are conducted by highly-trained instructors and pilots certified by the United States Hang Gliding and Paragliding Association and by the FAA. Light sport pilots are certified by the FAA. And the other item to respond to, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. We've been operating for seven years in this location, and I don't think that we have injured the value of adjoining property as we have operated. We have, we have not heard any complaints in that direction at all. We do our best to operate in harmony with our, our neighbors in the county. What additional questions do you have?
What's a trike?
A trike is, basically, it's a hang glider, excuse me, it's a hang glider with a motor on it, pusher, you have a...
So that's the tow vehicle typically?
It can be a tow vehicle, or it can be a flight vehicle on its own.
Okay.
So for, for example, our, our intention is to take passengers for tour flights in the trike.
Okay. Sir?
You can be the second person if you don't want to be the first person.
Yes, sir. I have one question. I know at the community meeting, the Littmans had some concern about how close it was over their house. Has that been addressed?
Yes. We, we addressed, at the community meeting, we addressed them directly, and, and we are doing the very best that we can to avoid flying over their property. Obviously, you know, safety concerns, things of that nature. We have to make sure we can react to what the conditions give us. But we, we definitely spoke to them directly, and our pilot was assured them that we would do our very best to avoid flying over their property.
Thank you.
How many, how many flights a day do you guys, if you have it, you have it mapped out to your head?
It, it varies greatly by the, by the month, obviously, but on, on a, on a very busy day, it could be as many as, as 30, 30... But on a very busy day, it could be as many as 30 customers that are taking a tandem hang gliding flight with us. And we also additionally train student pilots that are not just there for a discovery flight or a discovery lesson. It might be people that are actually training, we might do an additional 10 of those. So it could be upwards of 40 flights in a day.
What kind of hours?
That's my question.
Including construction, if you go past regular business hours, for instance, for instructing people?
Most days is about 8:00 in the morning until about 3:00 in the afternoon. Some days, it's much less than that.
What's your typical timeframe for like a flight? I mean, if somebody's being for a tour, I mean, there are 30 minutes, an hour?
It's going to vary on the altitude. And the tandem hang gliding that we've been doing for the last seven years, typical time for a flight to 2,000 feet would be anywhere from eight to maybe 12 minutes, depending on conditions. If we do a mile-high flight, could be upwards of 30 minutes of flight time. So, it does, again, also depend on conditions. So, we typically operate one student at a time going up in the hang glider. The light sport aircraft that we use to tow the hang gliders up now is able to come down quickly and pick up another hang glider simultaneously. Usually, it's very rare that you'd see more than two hang gliders in the sky at a time. I have heard that we have, this year, on occasion, on a day when there was a little bit of activity in the sky, like some lift, we've had four or five gliders in the sky at a time.
If the thermal activity is really good, then there can be multiple gliders in the air. They stay up.
That means they have no...
Just like a bird.
Just a comment. I remember when you got the original permit, concerns that were raised by the community, and it was good to hear that you've addressed any concerns properly. And basically, it sounds like you didn't have any complaints about the operation.
We have not had any complaints to us about the operation since we started. We had one complaint the first couple of weeks, and we were never able to track that complaint down.
What was the nature of that complaint? I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I cannot remember the nature of that complaint.
We did have one, 911 call, I think, one time. That was somebody didn't know what it was, and they thought that something was falling out of the sky. It actually was...
It's a bird, it's a plane.
It was definitely a safe operation.
Are there any concerns about the wildlife in and around that area, the hunting? Is that why October 1st is when activities cease?
Yes, that's precisely why.
I will tell you this, I used to fly in and out of Kirtuk a lot. And one of my greatest concerns coming in and out of that airport is when y'all were doing flight operations out of Kirtuk County. And, you know, military aircraft are allowed to use that runway per FAA. And I believe you all are carrying VHF radios, right? Some of those only speak UHF, and so a lot of times, I'm grateful that you're actually where you're at right now because, you know, it's one thing to have a, you know, firm landing at the Cotton Gin. It's quite another thing to meet a military aircraft that didn't see you.
Anything further from the applicant for the board? Thank you, gentlemen, very much. This time I'll open the public comment, and I have no one signed up again for this agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment. And is any further discussion from the board on this? If not, I will open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to approve PB 11-02, Use Permit Amendment Number One with staff recommendations because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. Conditions of approval, A, the landing area shall be limited to private use. B, the instrument flight rule procedures are not permitted. C, flight operations are limited to light sport aircraft, including trikes, tandem hang gliders, paragliding, powered paragliding, and solo hang gliders. D, flight operations are only permitted from April 1st to October 1st. E, aviation tour operations shall comply with the standards and regulations of the Federal Aviation Administration. F, flight patterns shall be established to limit flights below 500 feet altitude over single-family residential zoning districts or existing family, single-family residential uses. The use will not endanger the public health or safety. Operations are conducted by highly trained instructors and pilots certified by the United States Hang Gliding and Paragliding Association and the FAA. Two, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Operations have been conducted since 2011 in harmony with the surrounding area. Flight patterns have been established to minimize impact on adjoining landowners. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. The 2006 land use plan classifies the site as limited service within the Jarvisburg subarea. The proposed use is in keeping with the following policies of the plan. Policy CD 9, policy ED 1, and policy ED 4. And four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The proposed use will have no impact on public facilities.
Any further discussion from the board this evening? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, and best of luck to you in your future endeavors. All right, moving on to new business, item A, consideration of an ordinance amending Article 1, Chapter 13, and Article 2, Chapter 13, in the Kirtuk County Code of Ordinances to provide, for the time, provide for the time water and sewer service is committed to a service applicant. Mr. Steichluth, please explain this one to us.
I'm going to let our county attorney take this one.
Oh, Mr. Ick?
Mr. Chairman, this is in response to the recently adopted system development fees as required by this General Assembly's adoption of additional law relative to how counties may impose development system fees for connection and use of its public utility systems. One of the concerns that came up from the development community was that the general statute appeared to provide on its face that particularly with regard to new subdivisions, the system development fees would be required to be paid at the earliest of either the commitment of service by the county or obligation or the recordation of the final plat. Upon further research, we determined that there was some ability to delay the payment by the county determining at what point in time does it commit or obligate water and/or sewer service to a new residential subdivision. So what this ordinance does is, as to the water system, and I refer you to page, must pack it, page 70... Let's see.
73 or 74?
Start with the definition. Packet page 74, there will be the addition in the ordinance of a definition for system development fee, which describes what that is and at what point in time it will be paid. And when it is paid, that is when the county will be deemed to have obligated water service as further referenced on page 74, packet page 74, amending Section 13-10 of the ordinance. So that it would now provide the system development fee shall be paid at the time of application for a building permit or site plan approval. That would be for a residential subdivision. If building permit or site plan approval is not required, no building or other structure or use shall be erected, moved, added to, or structurally altered until the applicant has paid the required system development fee. So basically, what this allows is for the developer to, at a much later stage than was originally believed and originally thought to apply, to pay system development fees. Now, the downside and a proviso for the county to adopt this is that there will be no obligation for water, where it typically is obligated, which is during the application process. So, there could potentially be, we don't think we would have a problem with our water system, but there could be the potential down the road of a developer getting subdivision approval and at some point in time, come to the county at the issuance of a building permit to pay for system development fees and request obligation of service, and the county not be able to provide for water. And at that point in time, they would have, until such time as the county could provide water, an unbuildable lot for which a building permit could not be issued. Going on with the ordinance amendment relative to sewer, there is also the addition of a definition for system development fees. And then similar to the water provision, well, different than the water provision for sewer, it will remain, much as we have already understood the state legislation to provide, that if new development involves a subdivision of land, the system development fee shall be assessed when the final plat is recorded. And then if the new development involves something other than a new subdivision, then the development fee will be assessed at application for connection of an individual unit of development. So, that will provide for an earlier payment of the wastewater system development fee than will be required for payment of the water system development fee. But again, this is in response to requests and concerns raised by the development community, not only locally, but some of the development communities statewide apparently has been raising the same issue and concern. But again, with the warning that there could be some risk to the development community by changing the time or date upon which water service is paid for, committed, and obligated.
Who pushed for, because somebody clearly was an advocate for this change. Do we know who the...
So, what occurred is we were taking a very strict interpretation of the legislation. The Home Builders Association worked with some entities, and in Cabarrus County and some other counties, found a more liberal interpretation of the law. The school of government since that time has said that interpretation is correct and best practice, that you can choose to assess the fee at a later date. So essentially, it was the developers. The issue is that right now, they pay their, basically their water tap fee at the time when they pull the building permit. Whereas with the way we were interpreting the ordinance, you would have to pay potentially $130,000 whenever you recorded the plat.
So, the entity that pushed for this more liberal interpretation are the same folks that are going to pay the price if it's not ready for, in other words, if there's no capacity when they're ready for it?
Not only them, but it could be another smaller developer or someone else that catches on it.
Yeah, I mean, whoever, I mean...
And it could be a homeowner or consumer who's bought a lot and then decides a way to build and comes in for a building permit and potentially could find themselves without the ability to build.
And that's one thing. I know some of the comments that were made earlier today, and, you know, the state has taken more and more of what the county used to be able to do, has taken more and more of that authority away from the county and directed us, dictated to us, what we can and we can't do. And ironically, I'm sure there's cases where counties abused that authority and hence, you know, some aspect of that. But Kirtuk County has always been pretty customer-friendly. And it's unfortunate because as that state has taken away that authority, some of the very same ills that folks have expressed, and I'll use roads and drainage as an example, we are powerless in being able to do anything about it.
Mr. McCray, would, is there a way to, kind of a hybrid, partial payment, for instance? So, they come in with this 100 lot, you can't phase in, it's either all or nothing, or at each individual lot?
Could it be optional?
I think optional to pay the system development fee.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I came in, I come in, I want to be, I want to know, and I would suggest to you that there's aspects of construction loans that are predicated on your ability to get water and your ability to get sewer. And if you come in and can't guarantee that that capacity will be there when you need it, you may not be able to get the financing for your construction project.
Well, I don't think there'd be anything that would prevent someone from coming in, paying the fee at an earlier stage in the project, and requesting a commitment letter from the county upon payment of the system development fee.
Because I think, I think that's a great idea for a developer to mitigate their risk. Because if it's not available when they're ready, they had the opportunity, they had the option.
We don't need to put that in there, that they have the option to come in to...
No, I don't think there'd be anything that would prevent someone from coming in. If they pay the system development fees, they would then be...
Then we're obligated to...
Be able to receive the commitment or obligation from...
We just need to make sure that that's explicitly understood with every subdivision. Because no one told me needs to not be an excuse.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Beaumont, we'll definitely pass that on to the developers. So, you're welcome.
Well, okay.
Now, of course, because you do not have all commissioners present, and as we understand it, ordinance has to be adopted unanimously at its first reading for passage. And we'll have to come back to your next meeting, at which time it may be passed by a simple majority vote.
So, are we worried about capacity? I mean, I know I commented on it, but is that really, do we ever, are our eye on the ball enough to make sure that that's not going to be an issue?
It does not give me near the concern on the water side as it does the sewer side. We can stand up water capacity very quickly because of the way that our water plan is designed. We cannot stand up sewer capacity near as quickly.
As we've seen. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Open the floor for a motion.
Move for approval.
Does it have to be unanimous?
Well, you still...
This makes it come back for a majority.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Beaumont? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously, but we will have to bring that back for a vote.
Just one point of clarification, just in case the board gets any questions. Between the time that we pass development fees and this point, and if you all decide to amend the ordinance, there are developers who have paid the total upfront. There is no way for them to get a refund, just so that everybody understands, in case you could ask any questions.
Once you're in, you're in.
Yeah.
Okay. Money's already gone. Okay, thank you. Next agenda item, board appointments. Number one, Board of Adjustment. Do you have someone?
I believe I have multiple tonight.
Well, we'll start at Board of Adjustment. Does anyone have anyone to appoint to the Board of Adjustment?
I believe I have one to replace for Board of Adjustment and the Game Commission. At this time, I'd like to appoint Carol Bell. She's a lifetime resident, lives in Moayak. She was on the planning board previously. She's requested some interest to be on this. That's my point, gee.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is any other point? That was it for this one, I believe. Okay, so, Selena, you're seconding that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, Carova Road, Carova Beach Road Service District. I'm going to move to put Vance Iglut on there. He's a non-resident owner, and this is a consensus appointment. Commissioner Corrigan, I believe you had Mr. Gilliam to replace... Mr. McCray, do we need to move, remove... Mr. McCray, do we need to move, remove, was it Woody Dreher? Was his time up? Okay, well, his time is up, so perfect, so we don't have to remove him, just replace him.
And that was, the replacement was going to be...
Mr. Bob Gilliam?
Bob Gilliam.
All right.
That is it for that one.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for these?
I'd like to say you're replacing Kevin Riggs. Kevin hadn't even been to one meeting. They had not even had a meeting, and he told me the other day he had just gotten a letter from Eric that they were getting ready to have a meeting, so...
Well, Mr. Dreher hasn't had one either. And as I believe, Mr. Riggs is not supportive of our efforts to do anything on the road up there as well. He told me that at the meeting we had up there, that he did not support the county's efforts up there with respect to getting the roads and spending tax dollars to do that or anything else, so...
I'll move to second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Game Commission.
I have that one as well. The Game Commission, I'd like to appoint Andrew Schilling.
And I'd like to reappoint James Kason Jr. of Knox Valley.
Okay, anything further for that board? I'll second those. And any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. I believe that one is me, and I'm going to move to reappoint Mr. Richard Williams.
And I move to appoint Charles Wolfe for that position, for my position that's open.
And I also have an opening position, and I'd like to appoint Christopher Bell of Shawboro.
And I'd like to reappoint Jerry Forbes.
All right.
I believe I have a reappointment as well.
You have Curtis Austin, he is...
No, that was from the Game Commission.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one?
For the...
Johnny Messina?
Yeah, Johnny Messina, I'd like to reappoint Johnny Messina.
Johnny Messina. All right. Who's second in the room?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Library Board of Trustees, and I have an appointment with that as well. I'm going to nominate, reappoint Ms. Carrie England to that board.
And I would like to reappoint Amanda Lynn Rose Carey to that board, Kelly, to that board.
I'd like to nominate Sandy Faust to fill that vacancy.
Any other appointments?
No, but did, was there anything about the husband and wife serving on the board together? Because Mike Faust is my appointment on the library board. I had sent an email, wondering if there was any issue with my husband and wife serving on the same board.
There's nothing in the ordinance relative to appointments of persons to county boards that would prohibit it.
Can they ride together? I'm good to resist.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to reappoint, Mr. Charles as well. Thought I had one of that as well.
All right, that covers that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next agenda item is a consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. I'll set the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'll open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board. Agenda item on that is a change order, number one, Ocean Sands Water and Sewer Treatment Plant. Is that you, Mr. Stackleather?
It is. This is some funding that we have left over, it's part of it. As the deconstruction on the plant continues, as we reach that point, it's going to be time for us to spend some money replacing concrete bollards, pouring new concrete, doing some other upgrades to the infrastructure around there. This allows those projects to be completed.
Okay, thank you. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. While we're on Ocean Sands, stinky water over there.
Stinky gas.
Stinky gases are being admitted, emanating.
They are. They are. There's no real change from the last update that I gave on that. The staff's aware of it. We're trying to pump the sludge in the old plant out as gently as possible to try to keep it from gassing off and creating that odor, but unfortunately, it is just part of the process.
So what kind of timeframe do we have for getting the rest of the happiness out of there?
Right after tours.
Right, right.
I can't speak to the timeframe off the top of my head. I apologize.
Fair enough. I'll open the floor for motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you. All right.
Give me a second.
First, there. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.